Okay, so let's ready to go.
Okay. Calling to meeting, the May 30th, 2024, rescheduled from the May 16th, 2024, meeting of the Historic Resources Commission here in room 204-111 North Front Street. It is now 4:02 PM. Thank you. The next business meeting of the commission, actually, I think these dates are wrong.
Over.
Next business meeting of the commission will be?
June 6.
Thursday, June 6th at noon, here in, sorry, next door in room 205-111 North Front Street on the second floor. With the next hearing being Thursday, June 20th at 4:00 PM, room 204-111 North Front Street on the second floor. Starting with swearing in of the staff, Jaclyn. You swear to tell your truth and testimony before the commission is hearing.
I do, Jaclyn, myself.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jaclyn. And starting with an introduction of the commissioners here present this evening, starting on my far left.
Samika Baba.
Megan Simmel.
Justin McCabe. Mike Ford.
Clyde Henry.
Pat Leisure.
And Cynthia Hunt.
Thank you. Are there any items of public forum this evening?
No, I was at public forum, Jaclyn. Oh, yes, actually, I changed that. Sorry. We do have an item for National Historic Preservation and Recreation. So it's a statement and thanks from the city of Columbus. And stepping in is the Deputy Historic Preservation Officer, Lady R. G.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Aaron Prosser and James Goodman aren't able to make it today. So I'm representing both the Department of Development as well as the Historic Preservation Department and Planning Department. So really just here to say a huge thank you to all of you for volunteering your time with me being National Historic Preservation Month. We wanted to acknowledge your service to the city of Columbus's Historic Resource Commission, celebrating the important role that all of you play with city planning, preserving the character of our historic neighborhoods, and building a high-quality built environment in Columbus. And to give you a few stats, because I know Jaclyn's probably a bit too busy to run them all the time. But as a year overview, the commission represents a range of skilled professionals that have served between one and 18 years. And last year alone, this commission oversaw 334 applications with at least 204 certificates of appropriateness that were issued. This work has an impact on more than 59,000 square feet in the past year for an investment of approximately $1.6 million. And for example, the HRC reviewed and approved the rehabilitation of Indian Nola Junior High School at 420 East 19th Street. This property was built in the 1920s and was the first school in the United States that was built specifically to be used as a junior high school. The school will be rehabilitated and once again be able to use by the community as a school with its, of course, impressive architectural detail and design impact. So a huge thank you from all of us for all of your time and dedication, especially for things like getting your special meeting rescheduled. So from the department to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and a good meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of staff approvals.
So?
So there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So now having a motion of second, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I don't mean to abstain from 1445.
Okay, duly noted that you abstained for one particular case, I think, of this. So any action or approval would be not pertaining to that. Any vote you cast would be not pertaining to that property. Any other questions? Okay, hearing done, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions?
Abstention from 1445.
Okay, thank you for completely noting that. Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes from the last meeting, which was April 18th, 2024. So moved, having a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion passes. Moving on to applications of certificate appropriateness for this evening, starting with case number one, which is HR 2405-015-1826 East Livingston Avenue. Jaclyn.
Okay, so for this first application, this is proposal to designate Farmcrest Bakery's building at that 1826 East Livingston Avenue as a Columbus registered property per city code 817.06, 307.061, and 817.063. We have received the update that the subject building has been demolished, at least as of May 10th of this year. So per our city attorney's office recommendation, without the building, our recommendation at this time is to dismiss the application, since the building is demolished. We do have a speaker slip and a switch to the chair.
Susan Kenny. Approach.
And then just as a reminder, speakers have three minutes to speak, so I'll just put on a quick timer here.
Great. And did the applicant come in this evening or not?
I don't believe we have the applicant. The applicant did let me know that they were not able to attend last meeting. I have not heard from them during this meeting, but don't believe the applicant is here.
And property, or is that?
Correct.
Okay, Susan, three minutes officially.
Thank you. Susan Kenny, Columbus Landmarks. Needless to say, it's hard to know what to say at this point because the building is actively being demolished, if not totally demolished. Needless to say, we are extremely disappointed in the demolition of the Farmcrest Bakery. It is an example of streamlined, modern design that ironically is quickly disappearing from our cities. And I know that the nomination by the applicant was beautifully written to describe this. The building was also determined to be eligible for the national register. And in terms of grants, the Farmcrest would be considered a funding priority of the state Historic Preservation Office under the survey or nomination or rehabilitation of a resource of recent past such as mid-century modern and 20th century properties, which the Farmcrest is. And I only say this to mention the significance of what we are losing. The HRC had asked for photographs of, closer photographs of the, all sides of the building, what was behind the windows, and a little bit closer examination of the materials. And I think that the HRC should know that we did try to arrange a site visit with Woda Cooper. And they agreed to that, but sent us a memorandum of agreement that said we could not take pictures, we could not discuss the property, and we could not mention it once we left the building. So needless to say, we declined to do the site visit. So I'm sorry that we don't have better photographs of it. I just want to conclude by three questions to ask, and I don't know if it's appropriate for you to respond to those, but I'll ask them anyway, and I'll ask them all together. First of all, I'd like to ask if HRC has ever nominated an actively demolished site to the Columbus Register of Historic Properties. Then I'd like to ask if the building were still standing, would the building be recommended for nomination to the Columbus Register of Historic Places? And then last, has there been any discussion of ways for the public to be notified about proposed demolition of older buildings, ones that maybe aren't in historic districts? And that speaks to, in particular, to the driving park residents that have asked to be notified numbers of times. So with that, I don't have any more to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. So from a standpoint of asking the hard question of whether we as a commission would probably nominate, or, you know, we don't actually nominate, we can recommend the nomination. That's the register. I think we could ask that individually of how individual commissioners would feel. I don't know that we, I'd recommend we take any actual collective decision. I think we all acknowledge the challenge of nominating a building that is no longer standing, and certainly impossibilities. I do think we all recognize that this building had potential. It's sort of disappointing, maybe, the timeline of how things played out to where we are today. I would hope that in the future, maybe, maybe applications come through quicker or faster. I don't know how long this was going on, maybe up until the point that an application was submitted or when an application was submitted on the property, how much meat runway there was until the time that this sort of occurred. I think we all, you know, did our diligence in trying to understand the property and how attacked it was, and followed the guidance of the city's attorney's office, which we're only, collectively, we can all have our individual opinions. We have to rule by the guidelines we have of all the timelines. I think those are probably all pretty well understood within, you know, whatever these notification periods are and what could actually take a vote for a recommendation. So I would probably just defer to each individual commissioner, if you want to speak with them later, whether they would have advocated for such a thing. But I think collectively, we could all agree there was definitely some meat on this application for its consideration. And this is probably not the first structure that unfortunately has been lost. We collectively all see preservation as a key, important element for the city. And we definitely all support or have supported additional buildings coming on to the register. And I'm hoping that maybe more individual nominations are made quicker on individual buildings' importance. There is, outside of the HRC, I do know that from my non-HRC work, when you file a demolition request on a building, there is a window of time. And I believe a notification maybe goes to the area commission, but it does not come to us. I don't know that it comes to, this building's also not a historic district. So we did not hear about it, like we would get a demolition request in a historic district actually does come to us much more quickly. So that is a little different scenario than a building that's not a historic district. And Jaclyn, I don't know if you have any familiarity on what the process is, but I do know that there's a whole period from the time somebody makes a demolition application to when it's actually issued. And I think it solely rests with area commissions. And I believe even they are only recommending bodies. I don't know if they can legislatively withhold anything. I've never been, I've never been on the end of a project that's had opposition to that kind of thing. Usually it's very pro rehab, pro saving building, so this is very different.
Yeah, you're correct, Chairman Kade. We wouldn't receive any notification for buildings that are not either in a historic district listed that way or insufficiently listed. There is that certain period for demolition, that building in zoning requires, which I think this building went to. But otherwise, for the general buildings, it might go to the area commission depending on its location. But there's no one in building in zoning who would be evaluating if each and every building to be demolished could be potentially historic or not. So we just wouldn't hear about it unless it's listed or receives some sort of like public interest.
So thank you for that thought. I would turn this over to some, maybe, you know, my opponents from my commissioners. I personally would recommend both Columbus Landmarks and Susan, you have a great track record of preservation, to take this same message, though, with a little bit more detail about the building and its history, to city council and actually sign up as a public speaker. I know I've done the public speaker portion. I think council does hear and does listen. Hopefully you could kind of paint out the details of why this building was a key building to save, so that they hear a little bit more about the importance of that. We were at a disadvantage of just, again, this not being in a historic district already. And I'm hoping, you know, I know that when this Landmarks does an endangered list, perhaps there's a way to move those towards applications sooner or quicker. I think we've got a lot of people here who would support more individual listings, though. I don't know if anybody wants to add any other.
Okay.
I would say augment your city council's speech where you think perhaps occur or exist in the current processes as you see them, but it's not a district. I think that could be illuminating for them.
Yeah, I agree with that comment. And just clarifying that process, I think, would be helpful for everyone, so I think that's important as well. And I'm disappointed to see this be demolished. So just from my standpoint, I think, you know, this is a beautiful building here.
I second that perspective as well. Although the rules, interestingly enough, the rules were different. I'm from an historic district commission, so I've not opened an HRC for a few months. And the rules are different for districts than they are for individual buildings. And that got explained to me substantially in our last meeting when we talked about this. So if I'm not sure, I suspect there are lots of people who aren't sure or don't understand. So I think, again, illuminating the gaps that you guys are seeing in processes could be very helpful.
So I guess with no further comment, kind of following the recommendation of both staff and the city's attorney's office. I would love to hear a motion to dismiss. And once that motion is on record, I kind of feel want to make one more comment for record.
Move to dismiss, regret.
Second.
Having a motion of second. From a further discussion point, I actually would kind of like to know, just for record, just disappointment that the timeline played out the way it did. And that we lament the fact that the building has been demolished, did not get opportunity to be considered for proper placement. And we did not also get to fully review the merits of the application as well because of the time.
Especially if they're called upon by the physical evidence of the building, which we talked about.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion passes, for dismiss.
Thanks for coming in, you guys.
Okay, our second application is HR 2301-014, 40th Northwood Avenue. Continue application. And this is coming back for landscaping and hardscape work. So here we have the proposed modification of landscaping with the hardscape, as well as removing a portion of large rocks, and installation of granules and trunks in place of those rocks. So just to recap, the property received a code violation in August of 2022 regarding the changes of the front yard area to hardscape. So the application has come before the HRC a few times. And at the last hearing, the HRC continued the application to allow the applicant time to submit a revised landscape plan with some specific notes for some concern for rocks that were adjacent to the steps that appeared to be in place for the mulch and larger rocks that were present, as well as the smaller rocks that were running up until they were retaining curbs and something to secure those there. So response to this meeting feedback, the applicant has revised the proposal to replace a stretch of the zones or rub and to remove those, and then instead replace those with flocks plants, and they have submitted an updated site plan. So at this time, the staff recommendation is to recommend either approval of application HR 2301-0114 at 40 East Northwood Avenue with the following conditions: that the applicant's men revise landscape drawing, removing the rocks near the steps, and then preventing any spillage of those small rocks and mulch onto the steps, sidewalk, or the lower retaining molder. Or if the commission is not comfortable continuing application, to allow the applicant time to revise the application to meet that city code guidelines.
I see we have the applicant here, I think, this evening, so if you could raise your right hand, so. Do you swear to tell the truth and trust the money for this this evening?
Yes.
And if you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
Bruce Quack, I'm the manager.
Thank you. And Bruce, what else would you add for us this evening?
Jaclyn did a great job. Basically, if you see the blue highlights, and then if you could flip back to the photo, basically, you guys, one of the line of rocks out of there, so we're proposing to put continued flocks and juniper along those lines.
So all the big rocks are going to go?
Yeah.
There would be a place of these larger rocks here, is that correct?
That's right.
And then does the gravel still remain?
The smaller rocks, yeah, yeah. In hopes that the flocks and juniper will slowly, over the years, continue to grow.
I feel like it's definitely an improvement from where we were and with the kind of continuation of this landscape air condition of continued provision of more creeper blocks through here. And I think given, sorry, given the timeline, you know, giving this, making sure that over time this starts to kind of grow in and lessen the impact of the smaller rocks and gravel, that I definitely think it's an improvement. I agree with Jaclyn's suggestion of making sure, or being careful of like where that mulch is moving in. Stop spilling out either over the stairway or down slope of this kind of front area. So just comments to me in general, I appreciate the improvement of the site work. Continued input.
Thank you.
And that's the bottom, but do you think the rock and stuff will spread and grow even with those little bands?
If those larger holders are coming out, and if more flocks is being planted. And I do think that over time, it will take time, but I do think that over time. Now my other landscape forecast, down on the other end. Look for your suggestions.
Yeah, I agree, as long as we're infilling with additional plant material, eventually it will cover the entire embankment.
What about the rocks and the steps? The rocks that were buried under dirt, yes, the steps?
There were, yeah.
Is it covered in match?
Is it covered in? I'm sorry.
Well, we took, we took those rocks out and put mulch over. Those are railroad ties.
It looked like there were rocks underneath the mulch that you put over.
Yeah.
People see the, you see the white showing up? To the right.
Isn't that flocks?
Those are the flowers, I think.
Those are flowers.
Yeah. Originally, that was like railroad ties coming vertically up, because that was, those were railroad ties there, which is what started the whole project, because they deteriorated.
Picture of mulch over, set of rocks, and sort of buried rocks.
No, that would maybe have been a previous incarnation of what we had in mind.
Actually, so there are the rocks right there. That's what we were.
I think that might be from the line that's going across. But I mean, our intention is to have the mulch on the sides there that we, we agree, we agree with that as an improvement. Pardon me? You're speaking of what's on the left there? We'll give it a shot. I don't think, I don't think it's anything structural from looking at it right now. But we would take, but you see the railroad tie underneath there? Yeah, so there, we probably can't remove that without some erosion. Yeah. Okay, fair enough. Yeah.
You know, I still haven't heard about the mulch sort of washing around here. And then secondarily, on page number nine, you still have these other railroad ties that are aging just as quick. I mean, what's going to happen when those two ties kind of give out in short order? Like, it really is not all that unrealist to think that those two ties are problematic as for the other ties. What, you know, what happens then? Are those ties proposed to remain?
It's, it's going to be pretty hard. There's going to be a lot of erosion if we do take them out there of all the stuff that's there. They are.
But in a couple of years, when those do decay the rest of the way like your other ones have, what is the plan then at that point?
I don't really.
You'll be back at this commission again, essentially, and that's just, I just want to raise that now.
Sure. Well, we probably aren't going to put a lot of rocks in there. So, yeah. I just, I just think if we, if we take them out now, it's going to be, it's going to cause more harm than good.
The mulch, I'm still concerned about that mulch by the steps. It's not going to stay there for long.
Is the grade the same slope on both sides of the steps?
No, it's a little bit more.
Is that why you're concerned about taking out the railroad ties?
Yeah. Yeah. Which was probably originally why those railroad ties were put in, you know, 40 years ago, whenever that, whenever that happened.
Looking at vote number two. No, I still go back to, go back to page number two. I'm sorry. 2007. 2007, 2014.
It's crazy.
I'm going to find maybe the original identification file. So look on that. Right.
Disappointing.
I click the link on the agenda, so there was just a different angle that we looked at on this. No, keep going. Actually, it's right there, page number 10. So ultimately, when I look down the row of the street, you know, what do we see beyond this? We see green grass is, is, you know, what is, what is the resistance to simply returning stuff to green grass, which is what this historic district was, if it wasn't heavily planted fronts? Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking the question because, you know, the railroad ties were obviously some, some intervention right before the district was historic and, and that happened. These ties went away, there's done this gravel added, these large rocks added, a series of other things have happened. You know, and I look at like the original historical, you know, context of this property is really the green grass that we see beyond. And I worry about the gravel already is sort of, if you look at other photos, it is already kind of brought down onto the top of the little ledger stone at the bottom. We've got concerns about the mulch walking out of the stairs. You know. I just think like, long term, this thing will just not really end up. Like, it's, it's a horse here. You know, you've got some aging rail ties yet that may not hold up long term. And then there's going to be, as you know, further erosion. Is this, you know, we're proving a pretty bad Band-Aid potentially here.
Yeah, I don't know what the slope is, if that's really movable. Like, I don't know if it gets steeper as you do it down the street, it may or may not, I'm not sure. But I think what you're getting at is like, it should be either all green or blonde. So I think that's ultimately, it needs to be planted fully, and if that's the direction we want to head in. So that would be my, my thoughts, like, plant this very densely so that gravel ground cover goes away soon. And then it's a maintenance issue to make sure that's not washing out onto the steps or onto the sidewalk.
Yeah.
How many plantings do you have in, how many plantings do you have in there currently?
We have what you see, and then we are planning, you know, putting a dense row throughout that. And then as, as they grow, the way I understand it, you know, you can split the flocks and replant them. We were going to continue to do that.
Yeah, I think the size of the blocks kind of continue are looking for something a little more, a little larger. That would give you more coverage to make this a greener area. So I see that what you mentioned in previous comments, 30 to 50 plantings added, just to kind of increase the percentage of what the coverage is, what we're seeing right now. So I think at least, so figuring in the number of plants that you have now, right, to allow this area to become more green would be a better, potentially a better fit than kind of, you know, 60% of gravel, 75% of gravel than what we're seeing that's visible today. So I think there's still some more work to be done, and I don't know, maybe the commission is just feeling that we're not quite comfortable with the amount of gravel that's still visible.
Additionally, I just, I just have concern that, you know, the best, the best way we have to monitor the appropriateness of this is all tied to what is sort of really loose hand drawn sketches at this point, which don't really clarify for me what's going to be. really loose hand drawn sketches at this point, which don't really clarify for me what's going to be the placement. And by just saying sort of, we're taking out the rocks and we're putting in some plants here, really is not indicative of the size of the plant, will it really have impact? Or will it just look sort of like it still does today for the most part? With just big boulders gone and we still have little plantings that really don't give the right context. We can still seek approval on any motion here this evening. I, I just really, you know, how does a building inspector, somebody interpret sort of going off this drawing, whether it's even been fulfilled correctly? I just have concern about that, Bernie, out there.
The one thing I think, I think they're all agreeing that removing the big rock, big rocks is a good idea, right? So I think that is good. So, um, I think trying to break into chunks, so that's a good idea, those big rocks should go. We need more plantings in place of the big rocks, I think they agree with that too. We now just need a drawing of some, did I kind of scratched it out, I think? You can just add something that's more clear of the plantings, um, and, and I don't know if these circles are okay to represent the number of plantings? If it's more appropriate to, to represent what's reality.
They give more of an idea of the density is what you're saying, like there's gonna be ten plants in this row or something like that. Okay, could we get back to one of the, like the photos of the plantings, please?
Just, you know, one comes out.
How, how's the density? Like, let's talk about the in between the two rows of rocks. How's that density?
So like plants have a spread, right, that mature spread?
Yeah.
So what, what we're asking is like, are those actually gonna fill up the space and we can't tell that by your drawing, right? So the flocks might have mature spread of two feet and a migrant into the juniper, which has mature spread of four feet. But it's hard to interpret that from your drawing, as it, so you, you may have the coverage you need, but we can't really tell that from a drawing that we have right now. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not the plant person, so I really defer to all the landscape people here who have experience. You can buy a different sized plant originally to, uh, where it's gonna be, the wait time to get the maturity is, is a critical.
Right, well, right, and even the erosion issues, that's what you're getting at, like, the plant should be bigger, hopefully, at the, at the get go, uh, if possible. So especially if we're filling in areas that are large rocks right now. So like little, you know, one gallon containers are probably not gonna do much, but if we get some bigger plant material, that would be helpful also.
So we're, are we looking for, as, as far as the drawings go, something closer to a measured drawing? Right, where it is identifying not only the size of each, uh, part of the front lawn or slope? Um, but also looking carefully at each plant container that you're purchasing or intend to purchase? And what the recommendations of that plant's potential spread would be, right? So then that will give you an idea, okay, you know, in order to fill up seventy-five feet, right? I'm going to need to purchase fifteen plants because I know eventually each plant will spread out roughly around three, three feet, right? Um, so doing that simple kind of math to kind of help you figure out, uh, what would be appropriate, uh, would be helpful. I also think that the commission's trying to say they would like to see this vote to a greener overall presentation. Are you conceptually in the board?
If you're talking about green being, um, plants, like, uh, whatever that green plant is in the first row and the juniper and the flocks and the boxwood. We're, we're trying to keep from mowing this, you know, every week.
So assuming that it doesn't have to be grass, I think there was, there was a statement that said, if you could get to the point that through plantings, it felt more like green mass and grass like? And, and you could demonstrate, um, movement in that direction with your plan and a little more detail, I think that might, does that make sense?
So let me just say it back to you, so.
Well, let me ask the commission, is that clear?
Yeah.
That, that is a very fair assessment, if we're not going to grass.
Right.
The equal of getting dense planting has to go back to cover this gravel and lot and other stuff that's just been sort of hanging out there because.
But if you're, if you're doing vision, it's all rocks, I think you have a, that's what I'm trying to.
The other piece I'd just like to add to is others have stated just concern, I understand, I, I, I think part of your aim, if I can infer a little bit, is to minimize maintenance, right? You don't wanna mow and there's probably a minimal amount of maintenance you wanna do, that's, I think, understood. Nonetheless, what we're asking is to be more consistent with the neighbor, but the other piece of this though, is if you're shooting for less maintenance, the conditions we have right now on those edges, uh, we're gonna have mulch running off onto the steps, we're gonna have stones running on to that curb and onto the, the sidewalk, so that is gonna create more maintenance issues. So I, I'd like to see also some sort of proposal, um, to keep the materials that you're proposing in place. So that does not become, um, a maintenance issue where things are running on to, um, the steps and on for the walkway.
It, it's, it's one thing when we've heard the commission, for example, um, people have said, hey, I'd like to plant this area that I'd like to not mow with ivy, but then the applicant may not realize the upkeep of say ivy on a hillside, you've gotta go in and weed it every year, you've gotta do just like. We just want you to understand that there may be, keeping this maintained long term may exceed what you have in grasp, but that we, we, you know, that, just know that. And right now, there, I think there's this general concern about will the plants be maintained, get dense enough to do what they're supposed to do in an adequate number, adequate size? You know, will the gravel be kept from sidewalks, the mulch be kept off the stairs? I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of challenge here and there's a lot of stuff going on here. You know, admittedly, we didn't create this, this was, I think, an action of a code violation where a lot of this proceeded without any approval, so. Our guidance probably would have been quite different day one for you before we got to where it is today, so.
Sure, message received. So, uh, again, between the two rows of rocks, how's that density?
Not good. They're trying to tell you they don't believe it's gonna cover the density that you're gonna need. And if you think it will, you have to come back to us with this plant that this size, the, the breadth of the plant is to go to X, that we're gonna be covering, that's what they're praying. There's a lack of belief, I guess, in, in the density getting to a green presentation.
So some in your bottom row, some of that said grass, some of that grass will only go up to one feet, but some of them may go up to four feet. We don't know what you planned there, it comes up with. So I think if it's gonna be only one, one foot, then that won't be enough.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the bottom row, so that particular plant on the far left, that's relatively big. So if you're saying if I had some of those side by side, that would be adequate.
They have to overlap in their mature size, so the one plant shouldn't touch the other plant as it's grown out. So you don't see any ground cover, any rocks in the presentation. And, and most plantings, you know, you can look at, depending on the variety, the, the type of plant, there's recommended spacings on them. If you're going to want to see them fully mature and we, we just don't see a plan that's cohesively showing or reflecting, I think, what the mature growth path would be on this stuff.
One of the problems I think here is the, the variety of, of plants. Putting in a single species would have solved a lot of issues in what kind of do with the different properties because with a single species, they have a single species grass, something green, even where flocks have bloomed, okay, the rest of the year it's, it's green, they're spread, they're easy to predict. If you have a, a blank spot, you just move some over there. But I think maintaining all those different varieties in all different conditions, it's just gonna be really hard to do, but and it doesn't, doesn't seem historically that that's what anybody would have done.
Right.
I mean.
Just, there's so much going on.
Yeah, I don't, I've never seen a historical planting on a slope that had that many species at one time. Uh, you know, traditionally it was grass or ivy or, or something, it was a single species, um, so I, that seems to be a problem, but I guess I can live with multiple species, just by escaping, that's okay, inappropriate, that's again, that might feel dark.
And, and there is some merit, I think, in what, what he's sort of saying, I think at one point in your application, you've given us this picture of these blue flocks.
Yeah.
And, and when you look at how massive they're, they're planted close enough together that when they bloom, they've kind of covered everything. And after they go through their initial bloom, I think they turn all green and the whole thing is just a giant bed of green. And it's almost like if you picked one harmonious thing, maybe with a tighter spacing, it would just keep it simple, I think is the, the biggest thing.
Yeah, and, and, and the flocks do, they're just about done right now and they, you know, you should date them up, but if you don't.
They just look rubbery.
Yeah, they're, uh, they look reasonable with the various things.
I, I think we're, we're trying to find a way to help you cover up this gra, this small gravel issue too. And we're not saying, we're disappointed that the small gravel's all there, but knowing that it's all there, hey, how can you help cover it over it?
With the least amount of work and, and he spends on your side.
So on, but thanks for switching to this photo, so how's the, I was saying like the row right above the big row of rocks, the, the purple and the green, green, green and purple and green, how, how, how's that?
What are those?
Um, I don't know what the green is, but the purple is the flocks.
Okay, the flocks and green, something else. And as they grow, you're gonna, I mean, the, the one that's actually on top of the juniper maybe or something.
Oh, above that is the juniper, I was talking about just the ones.
Okay. How, how are you gonna maintain those species as, as separate and different growing conditions and, I mean, are some of those gonna need to be pruned and others not?
No, that, I don't, I don't know.
We, we, we can't be your designer for you, that's, that's the, the number one thing that's important here, so. I would, I would encourage you to look at other landscape plans that have been approved, because that's what we typically review, I guess, maybe that would clarify some.
This one's really unique though, so you're finding something.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say that that line is getting warmer to what we are getting at, right? Yes, you're on the right path, we just don't understand the eventual size of these species because we don't know what they are, so it's hard for us to say that this will fill up the rocks. But just right now, imagine that they will grow, I don't know what they're growing, they seem better than the other rows, so I think that's one way to think about it. You'd have to go back to the name tags of the species and, and really think about how much they grow out of them, they probably don't eventually, that's the goal.
Right, and, and unfortunately, you know, the, the application submission was, you gave us hand sketches and you said flocks perennial, but it didn't tell us enough about the species or the type or the spacing that, you know, it's not adequate documentation to get understanding, like what, what is this thing supposed to look like in five, ten or fifteen years to mature?
I guess, or green.
Yeah.
Believe it. Commissioner Ledger was given that, what other landscape plans have been approved specifically? Um, they'd be scaled and dimensioned, right? So it would be a drawing, how to scale, we would understand the dimension of planting beds in relationship to the sidewalk, your steps. Uh, there'd be overall dimensions, there would be center points on the plants, there would be notation about each plant, uh, with the species. And then, um, it would really be helpful for us too, if you were able to communicate amateur, um, growth, what the coverage of those plants would be. So then we could understand, oh, okay, applicant is, um, going through the thought exercise of really understanding how the coverage is gonna work. Because right now, there's, we understand that you're making efforts, um, to meet the requirements, but it's just a lot of speculation that we have to do on our part and I just don't think any of us are quite comfortable with the plan, yeah.
I think to help you out, if you look up specifically, just type in, Google, like landscape architecture planting plan. And that's gonna give you a number of different types of images of exactly what we're looking for, exactly what fellow commissioners just, uh, just explained. Um, so again, giving you that idea of like the way the drawing's supposed to be set up, the way the plant tables, that's plant species, comedy, size, you know, all of that. Um, and that should give you something that you can do a direct copy of, follow that, those layouts and you'll have a plan in note.
The staff can send out some examples.
I was gonna say, Jacqueline, is there some, I could get a list of approved plans and.
We do have some plans that definitely, um, share her examples and then there, I know there's one that's coming up, hasn't been approved yet, but I know it's like a typical plan that a commission would normally look at. It's a different situation, but the idea is very similar of adding coverage of something, uh, of an area, so the overall concept and it will be helpful. Um, so definitely include a couple of those different landscape plans, um, for different areas, take a look, get a good idea.
Yeah, we just, we just have to get to a point, a cert, a cert tee of what we're approving, then be able to prove that the documentation is a level two that can even be enforced. Ultimately, box to check and say that why not a plan that was adopted or. I, I would probably suggest that we make a motion to continue this and give you the time necessary to make application amendment revisions. Uh, and then subsequently, if you do come up with a plan that, that's consistent, we then can still have the opportunity, if we feel it's adequate, to a staff approval or do some other things. Or if not, we go back to this far, but, you know, we don't want you to keep coming back, we do wanna get the kind of the level of documentation, I think, sorted out a bit better.
And then just as a heads up, this might be the turnaround for the next meeting, might be too quick anyway, I'm not sure we were planning this. Um, but since this hearing had to be rescheduled, um, applicants that are continued on this hearing will still have extra time to submit. Normally the, um, application deadline, for instance, would have been last Friday for the June hearing. However, um, it will be until next Wednesday, um, which would be the day before the business meeting. Um, if you're able to get that in, and we're just having a place hold around there, so just something to keep in mind.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably a little tight for me, so.
That's fine, yeah.
Maybe July, see each other again in July, right?
I wouldn't know, um, I'll basically cancel in for July, that's a, a better date to shoot.
Okay, so just to kind of recap here, so basically what your, uh, this, a couple of bullet points. You'd like to get an understanding of the potential actual mature size of the plant, one. You'd like to see more of the area, more, more green than rocks. You'd like to see some overlap of the plants. And I can get this information from the, uh, actual, uh, plant tags. And then the, the landscape architecture planting plan would give you guys a better handle on what this is, what my thought is, that this is eventually going to look like. And that a third party code enforcement official can say, this was planted according to this plan, you guys approved this plan and this is we're, you know, growing in size to reality of, okay.
And I just mean clear, make sure you specify what that is as well as the coverage.
Right, yeah, sure, the, right, yeah, the, what the, the actual the, the name of the plant.
Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue. So.
Ben, is there a second? Okay, having a motion and a second, Mr. Penner? And any further discussion?
I have one question, could he show you that when something interim, if he comes up, just a little sample? And you could say that's kind of what we're looking for in terms of the data? Is that something you feel comfortable with?
Um, sorry, that, your clarification, you mean like sending, um, an example of landscape plan to staff?
A sample of like his table of the plantings and what was included in, and like what you're thinking about, just so before you go, so that's the whole thing. He sent you a little sample and you could say you're on the right track, would you please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, anytime.
Just try and get you an interim.
I see, sir, rather than a complete plan that doesn't get approved, sort of a.
Do you have a interim checkpoint so you can know you're on the right path?
Jacqueline, do I have anything else, any other business?
I think, uh, yeah, this is the only business and I think it was a very good summary.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Any other further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you for uh, the feedback. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, moving on to.
Thanks.
Case number three, H R twenty-three oh seven oh three oh B, that's six fifty-nine Lynnwood Avenue. Even before you sit down, you raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission's evening?
Yes, sir.
If you could state your full name and associated property.
Nathan Matthew Glass, and I'm a contractor for Larry Peterson.
Okay, great. You get to have a seat, Jacqueline.
This application is proposing for construction of a new rear porch. Um, and so previously, an application to demolish the previous porch was approved at the July night, my June hearing. Uh, and that was due to the majority of the porch that was found to be a later addition on this work and also a branch as well. Uh, the condition of that was certainly applicable to the proposal for a new rear porch. Uh, and so the business meeting, or at the business meeting, the committee provided um, some additional requests for information, but patients. So responsive business meeting, K F A, the applicant has submitted a revised drawing, uh, specifically of the multiple patients before showing the dimensions of the railings, as well as including those pink color chips. And the product image showing what the porch lattice will look like. And the applicant also uh, further clarified that the lattice would be wood, and that they will be trimmed out with a one-by-four, with a porch skirting. And then all railing and skirting to the fascia and socket, um, they're proposing to do the bare unwind color. Um, so overall, the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application, H R twenty-three zero seven zero three zero B at six five nine Wood Avenue. As submitted, any null clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for reviewing approval prior to issuing the certificate. That recommendation is based on the city code, three one six point one four, stands for demolition, um, as well as the three one six point eleven standards for alteration and the guidelines regarding purchase and stairs.
Great. Uh, what would you like to add for we?
Uh, there was a few things that I saw, like in the email, it was about the footprint. The actual footprint is, I drew it exactly to what it's going to be. Um, I can't go any farther than the homeowner wanted to keep the stairs. They're solid. It's, yeah, it's it's, everything's to that, but then uh, the, so the original structure, there it was, there was nothing historic about it whatsoever. It was years of, uh, it was built in the eighties, um, years of people just putting their hands into it. When I was taking apart, there was concrete, five different ceilings in it, all of that. Uh, so I tried to incorporate best of my ability of what was on the house as far as the soffit, fascia, box cutters, and try to replicate that into the back porch, um, the dental molding, the colors. All of that. So I mean, it's, I I I looked in the area to kind of see back porches, and they're all, at one point, I was somebody's had their hands in, and there's nothing really as far as railings and all of that, so um, just with my knowledge and what I could get off of the house as far as to replicate.
I will open this up to commissioners for discussion.
Um, I, I think it's appropriate. Uh, uh, we're actually very impressed with your drawing.
No, thank you.
We're both architects. Everything is done today, but.
It took about two semesters of uh, architectures.
And uh, very, very good, and also really kind of show an understanding of the.
Thank you.
Together. Uh, yeah, I think it, I think it's appropriate for the for the building, I think, done your research, and yeah, be supportive.
I I would just add, if you could um, make sure to detail on revision with a follow-up to staff, your downspout locations, size of those downspouts, finish of the downspouts, where they come down, how they're attached, because if.
Yeah.
They're attached to a column, it's one thing, but if they're attached to a brick, they have to be fastened in order.
They're going down the center beam right beside the stairs. Uh, that's where everything's getting sloped to from the box cutter, so it's going to be a trough sloped right down out of the soffit.
If you could just revise your.
Absolutely, I'll draw it for you.
Downspouts, a bunch of that are. Uh, typically, we see round stock downspouts.
That's what's on the home, so that's what we were going with.
So you match this thing, yeah, I think some images show those downspouts that are existing.
Yeah, yeah, they're the, uh, what are they? I'm gonna say three inch, maybe? Not not that.
You can see the downspouts on corners.
Might be four inch, wait.
And and are you just sheet grating that at the bottom, or is that going to tie in somehow?
There's nothing to tie in. It's it's all concrete, and then underneath of what was originally there is just straight dirt. Um.
So you just discharge on?
We're going to discharge it out, since it's concrete, just out into the yard. That uh, it is quite, it's it's sloped, that concrete is right there. It has a slight slope on it, so I think there would be no return to foundation on it, so.
I do have a question for staff. Will building and zoning approve this level of drawing without load calculations or other things? Are you, do you think these are sufficient for building submission, or are they going to require additional refinements and technical details?
So I believe the applicant, you reached out to building and zoning, and asked today, say this is um, okay for?
I haven't, I have done other load bearing, and that's why I went with an eighteen inch by forty-two footers and six by six beams. There was four by fours on them, and it was attached, well, it was supposed to be attached to the home, but since it's going to be free standing, that's why I upgraded to a six by six beam and then uh, eighteen inch footers, so.
Yeah, basically, just by making sure that uh, you don't have to do any additional drawings for building and zoning, but if they do, um, just to make sure of spec or final, like stamp.
Yeah, it was either that or engineer, like with uh, I beams coming out, house being attached, so that's where I came up with what we have.
Yeah, I I just wasn't sure, based on the size, two stories, we got a porch commission, if they'll accept this without a stamp on it. Yeah, but but that's a discussion of them.
Like an architecture stamp.
Or engineer, same.
They said I wouldn't have to give them unless I was attaching to the home.
Yeah.
Um, which it's going to be attached, but it's not carrying the load, right? So um, I'm going right back into the same uh, board that's up there. But the load's being carried by the six by sixes, because originally there was only three, and it was attached to the home. Now I have six, so.
So if we can just make sure also that we get some sort of detail or affirmation, I assume you're going to have to lag something to the masonry. And we generally usually just care about how those new interventions are fastened to hold historic structures, i.e. the home.
Okay.
And and that that's done at the right location.
Yeah, there there's a, there's a header in there. It's uh, wood, it's a two by, might be a two by four, I I don't know, but I was just attaching it because there's going to be a rubber roof on it, so I'm going to have to take the, take it back to the uh, to the brick, so.
Right, but you're going to attach to the brick.
Eat to that, yeah, to that board that's in there.
You're saying there's a piece of wood in the masonry?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If it, if it's, if it's good, then I'll use it, but it most likely I'll end up replacing that as well.
So then that's getting into interventions that were pulling the wood out of existing to lag back into that, like like that scope isn't ironed out, so we don't have details related to that?
Okay.
Right, no likely have some sort of termination detail of the rubber to maybe like a termination bar?
It, that's what it's going to be, is a termination strip, um. Yeah.
So termination will have to be attached to the masonry, right?
Yep.
So if we get it, again, it goes back to, I think, loops missing details that need to be.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll draw that up, that termination strip, and then the attachment to the, the house.
And then just, just for record, too, I guess, so then those two doors that exit out onto what used to be a second floor porch, you're leaving more as a roofing dot porch?
It it was with.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was just, it's just access out onto the roof.
But the doors will remain just doors that are just blocked off and forever.
For safety reasons right now, but they'll be, um, the boards will be taken to be, I guess, used, they don't use them, but yeah.
So then I I guess my my questions go back to, you only have a thirty-six inch high railing? And I don't know, is that second floor porch, a thirty-six inch railing going to work by, I don't know that that's consistent, both?
Well, it's thirty-six inches, but then there's uh, four inches below, so it turns it to forty, forty.
And then this whole thing pitches to the front, so then to the railing.
It'll still have quarter inch slope, quarter inch slope for per. The fascia and soffit, those are going to be square, they're going to be level. What's sloping is the inside, the actual roof deck is sloping into the box cutter, so.
And there's uh, I'm scanning, we can't be the designer, but those box cutter details are pretty tricky, so there's not a lot of information here. Just make sure that you give that appropriate.
I'll I'll draw it up. I thought about it, and it's the trough, and I knew I missed the gutter after I had submitted everything, so I know you guys want to see that, obviously. Uh, I'll draw that up and the dimensions of it and all of that, so.
Right, that could have possibility, you know, long-term damage if it's not done.
Yeah, absolutely.
End up different on it.
I'd be okay moving this with conditions to that the follow-up details go to staff, and then if staff does not believe, what else are adequate, or you have questions about the adequacy, that can always come back to the commission.
I'm comfortable with that. I do have one clarification question, apologies if I just have remembering. Um, for the flat rubber roofing, uh, would this have uh, material on top of the rubber roofing? Or just the top of the?
It's just going to be the rubber roofing.
Okay, and then do you know the color? So that's what brings the next question. Um, for our standard, usually we can approve not like a black or a gray, but white is something that we are typically can't staff approve at least?
Black.
Black, okay, thank you. Move to the group, intended on supplying the described details, I don't remember them all, that Jacqueline has done. Um, and working with staff to get them to approval state, and that does work to bring back to commission.
That's, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Any further clarification, Jacqueline?
Um, I guess I'll just confirm, just to make sure I've got everything, yeah, that was, that'd be great. Yeah, so uh, applicant to add the downspout locations, which is those details onto the drawing, as well as um, and supply a termination detail or how this is attaching, and then just making sure that box cutter detail is drawn out or shown.
I think that the railing needs building code, the railing.
We have many of this can go to self-approval, unless you feel, feeling, feeling else to occur.
And hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion passes. Is what we're Jack on.
Oh, absolutely, and uh, thank you again, three times.
Moving on to case number four, six six seven Lynnwood Avenue. Is there an avenue here for six six seven Lynnwood Avenue?
So, the residence is uh.
You're good?
Yeah, that's good.
If you could raise your right hand, sir, you swear to tell the truth in in your testimony before the commission's evening?
Yes, sir.
And if you could state your full name and association, property correct.
Perez Aguirre, D Z Properties.
Okay, owner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jacqueline.
Uh, this application is for alteration of a front door transit and side lights. Uh, we have removed the addition part from the application since the permit was issued in error. And then also the installation of board for privacy fence. Um, and so this property, I think, was the first one to have story, American Forest Fair Residence. And then we have that alteration that we've seen previously. Now, the applicant has submitted a revised drawing, proposing to add a transom uh, back in that entry doorway to better match that original historic configuration. The door itself that was replaced, just as a reminder, was not historic, and so the applicant is proposing to have that transom and door now match with the currently installed side lights, and then they would be also painting the, um, the roof that's not. And so the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application, H R twenty-four zero four zero one nine at six six seven Lynnwood Avenue. As revised, any null clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review approval prior to issuing the certificate. That recommendation is based on the city code, three one six point eleven standards for alteration, as well as the guidelines regarding windows, doors, and the amendments to the guidelines regarding door replacement.
Thank you, Jacqueline. And so just for clarity, um, thank you for the diligence, the follow-up. We did get confirmation on the permit items you received. Permit for, so we're not saying, but seriously, because we talked about previous meetings, so I'll make sure that's there for everybody. What, for me, if you could just clarify, what is the proposal now on, so that was the first, uh, we've got this today, what is the replacement now that's happening? What what page can I find, or can we bring that up, and what is being proposed to be the alteration? So I'm I'm looking at this, and I see thirty-six inches wide by thirty-eight inches high.
That's the glass, the glass in the middle. That's the door, the middle, the two line, the thirty-six, this is the door. The two sides is the sideline, I mean, the two sides, and the bottom is only wood, and the two sides, and the above the thirty-six, I'm I'm above the thirty-one, actually. It's that, it's a, it's side lights, glass. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to replace the door, because the door, as of now, the door is ninety-six. I'm going to take it off, I'm going to put eighty, eighty-two door and twelve inches of uh, side, you know, transom.
So it'll be a twelve inch transom as well?
Yes, yes. So I'm going to keep the side, but you have a picture, you can see it, because you have closer pictures, so you can see how it looks if you, gentleman can move it from the, let's see a clear picture of the door.
That's what I was confused by, thirty-eight, yeah. I was confused by this thirty.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think you went too far. Oh, yeah, 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 this, no, 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 go up two, yeah, 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 exactly, yeah.
So the current door is extra tall beyond what.
Exactly. So we, I'm going to replace the door to eighty-two and just to put, rebuild the transom, keep the side lights.
I'm okay with the concept, but I'd still like to see a sketch of what I suppose.
That's the sketch I did. The sketch, you know.
So I'm clear, it's a single light replacing the three by three?
Yeah, it's going to be only single plus.
The side light says three by one, right, as they are, and adding a transom, right? And what about the bottom?
The bottom is wood.
It's going to be the same outline as on the side lights?
Yeah, that's what I want to keep it, you know, like the same uh, same style.
Yeah, I I just don't feel like this looks like a door.
I'm sorry, maybe, you know, I did it, but it's not the.
You know, we, again, I go back to, we have to have something that uh, reflects what can be inspected in the field and reflect appropriately what's being proved by the commission.
Right, like we don't know the total height of the door, is there?
Ninety-six, it says over there, twelve, and then uh.
It says twelve, and it says thirty-eight.
And there's thirty-six on the right side, so twelve and thirty-six and forty-one. On the right side, it says forty-one.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-nine plus twelve.
Oh, there's a forty-one in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Seventy-nine plus twelve. Uh, okay.
So the door itself is so.
As of now, the door is ninety-six.
Yes, but you're moving it to seventy-nine.
Yeah, eighty-two probably, and then I'm going to make the twelve, the transom.
So they'll take the existing door and literally rework that existing doors and you, well, that you got.
No, we're going to build a new door, with the carpenter, like just, they're going to do custom made.
Okay.
And you're going to make the bottom of the door the same as the bottom? And you're gonna make the bottom of the door the same as the bottom on the side lights?
Yeah, same, that's what I'm saying, it's gonna be wood.
So a lot of, the, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's, the bottom gonna stay wood, and the glass is.
It's wood, trying to understand what's gonna be carved into it.
Is it like a flat piece of wood or?
No, no, it's gonna be built the same way as the other two sides, it's curved a little bit.
So the side lights today, though, would remain, you're, you're relusing, so you're reusing the side lights?
Yes.
The bottom of the door is gonna match the same place.
Yes.
Side lights, sort of, I'm asking you that.
Then if the side lights are gonna remain?
Yes.
Your middle door is gonna become shorter, then the wood on the side lights and the wood on the door will be off, what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
That's gonna be the same line.
So you're gonna keep that, okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same, okay, that's the question that I'm here also, I can make the, the glass bigger, it's a custom made. I mean, I figure, like, I can, so that's the plan. Since I'm building it up from scratch, I can do, if I need to go, I'm trying to be kind of like, to work with the two side lights, that's gonna be, look like one piece and not just like to be uh, so you tell me what's you, what do you think, if you want me to build up like the, a bigger glass, like, whatever, I can, I can, I can do it.
Is the top uh, section of the side light, do you know what that is, the, the height?
We'll do a twelve, it says twelve.
The transom, the side light, the side light both?
The existing. It's the whole door, the whole frame, it's ninety-six.
Right, what is the size of each light? Of each piece of glass on the, in the.
Let me, let, let me calculate it for you, okay, because it's uh, it's uh, ninety-one, and this is uh, as of now, if it's uh, ninety-six minus forty-one, it's fifty-five, fifty-five, I believe it's about uh, about fifteen each.
So there's a three inch?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the wood.
High or tender transom?
Yeah, it's the wood.
Is there value?
Right.
Is there value in making it insane, I mean, it's a little funky, but, yeah.
Yeah. Trying to figure it out, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know we're, you know, the, the transom went away, we wished it had, but I, I feel like this is locking it up a little bit more.
I think if you make a, you know.
Yeah, it, it almost is worse.
Feel like I need to look at them.
If, if you go, there, there are, like, page twenty-five, uh, has a, has the original, you know, that, that's kind of what, where we used to be on this thing, uh, you, yeah, the page before, the page before it as well, is it, is it even better, you know, that, that really tells you what it had originally, I just, I don't know.
And the transom lined up with the top lights?
Yeah.
And?
Volume.
Yeah.
Feels like the volume should cross to me, like, they should use it high, but is a fifteen inch transom going too weird?
Well.
Yeah.
But it's also a big.
I know, it's like.
Yeah, you also, your proportion door.
Exactly.
Right, and, and to me, so I, I look back at like historic homes that had extra large doors, and sometimes it was a matter of that they just didn't have volumes in that center door, and it's just one big thick piece of glass. And I almost feel like, you know, while the transom's gone, and it's a loss of history today, that almost like just taking the existing door and taking the volumes out of the existing door, leaving a giant piece of glass, and it may be the best solution.
Yeah, I think it looked better than with his being posed.
Yeah.
Do you mean one bedroom?
I can do that, I can take off, cut it and just put a loose.
Yeah, just, if, if we're looking at the screen right now, um, it's literally just making it from a, from a, a nine light divide to just a single piece of glass.
All of them, like the side lights and the door?
I think that, I think that, that, that everything I see as I'm looking at the web has the side lights the same height as the transom.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm trying to think if I've ever seen one that wasn't.
I know.
And I can't. I can't think of any that I've ever worked on.
See, everything I'm seeing is, even when this, when the transom's, this, like, shows up, even when the transom's large, it's still connected as, at the moment.
Right, right. Because it, it's supposed, the, the side lights are supposed to be.
It's part of the door. That's right, and then you look at the same kind of thing.
Yeah, it's, it's almost like if you look at the screen behind you, you go up two lights, you know, where that third, you know, where that top tier of lights is, it really ought to have a horizontal across the whole thing, right? And that's, that's the more normal height of the door, but because we don't have the transom, the door's just a really long tall door.
I feel like one big glass would be much.
You think it's too much?
If I'm looking at all the stuff, I mean, I do it to Victoria doors with side lights and transom, right? Not saying anything that is, and again, I'm not necessarily looking at through historic stuff here, I'm looking at samples that are modern versions. Next time, bring in a sample from the web that says, here's what I'm trying to emulate, and we'll all be better off.
You're good.
Not seeing anything where the, where the volumes don't line up so far, across the top. If there's glass.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you. Also, if he did line him up, that would make that door very, very short.
That's, I'm worried about that, too.
I mean, actually, it would.
Too short.
Really possible. Certainly not like the original.
Working.
The, the proportions on the original are correct. In the picture on page twenty-five.
Let me ask another question.
Can we do a tour or change the question?
No, okay, I mean, let's see what.
Which says of the door, looks, it's just, it said fifteen at the top, it's less. Top transom is less than fifteen, sideline at the top, it's, it's the size of the, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
So, a-actually, can, can, can you go to Google Maps?
Let's look in the neighborhood.
And actually, let's look at uh,
I'll go look at that.
Thanks. It's gonna be across the street, I think it's about six fifty-two, Lynnwood Avenue, which is a few houses down.
It would be sixty.
Yes, that's actually it, so I'm gonna just approach the screen real quick here, and, and so, no, go, go the other way. So if you look at, it's this one right here, uh, yeah, slide in there, this is actually one large piece of glass. Really store, and then it has two side lights, but that is one large.
It's like a three-quarter slide door?
Yeah, it's a three-quarter length.
With no transom?
With no, there will be no transom in there. I was kind of zooming in, I'm looking at it, it had side lights that are just big pieces of glass and.
If you want, if, okay. If you want me.
Yes, if you just simplify the side lights and the glass.
I can, yeah, I can take off from the side lights and just put one glass, and then in the middle, one glass in the door, and.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that's okay.
At least it then exists in the neighborhood, the language is.
Yeah.
Those big pieces of glass where the.
Right, we could reason.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, 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 that's very durable. So remove the, remove all the glass we have, just to make it like a, one piece, one piece and one piece in the door. Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Which is one cost saving, that's, that's pretty good cost saving, sorry, I think that. Because you're reusing a lot of what you already have.
The V glass.
Yeah.
Okay, beside, Jaclyn, beside this one, I think we all, we done, I'm done with all, right?
The side plan still for the.
I sent it to you, I think you should, you should have it, I emailed it to you today.
See to it as of yet.
Okay, so the side plane and uh, and uh, I sent you the picture of the door that we removed, did you see that?
Have the door that was removed? No.
The, the door on the side, the fence.
Uh, no, I haven't.
You didn't see it, so I did send it to you, I emailed you. So whatever, I mean, I have it here also, if you, I can send it to you now, but I was.
Send that, uh, send that to me, and I'll take a look.
Okay.
So, in this, this, we just would need some sort of documentation following up with Jaclyn.
Yes, sure, sure.
Regarding the, the replacement of.
So it's gonna be contingent?
Contingent on a follow-up that you get a draw and check, and it shows that you're just gonna take out the volumes of the side lights of the door, and you're making single pieces of glass?
Any, any specification for the glass that uh?
You'll have to work with, I, I think that requires safety glass, but that's, we're not boat experts and we'll.
Okay, so now you have no one, okay, very good. Okay? Can I?
And, and you, everybody's okay, I think the stain is proposed, dark, the darkest.
Oh, exact, again, the, the, the stain, I send you the espresso, I send you the col, the color and everything?
Yeah.
Is that approved?
I think we're seeing yeses.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I looked at the, the doors around the neighborhood, and I see all of like dark brown, so it's kind of, this is the closest.
And that was the only, that was the only thing we were actually truly now at this point working with. So, if there's a motion for that, then this one.
Been doing them all the endings.
Yeah, please. For, yes, uh, for HR twenty-four, oh, four, oh, one, nine, six, six, seven, Lynnwood Avenue, motion, um, to prove, uh, on condition that, uh, the applicant is gonna update the drawing, uh, for the door, uh, based on all the notes you had, Jaclyn, what you talked about, that changes to the side lights, making it all one blue glass, and then no transom, transom, all just glass, but having the right drawing for that, um, and you will review it, and uh, paint is approved.
Stain.
Stain is a stain, sorry, espresso stain is approved.
Any further, oh, well, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, having a motion, a second, any further discussion, any clarity? Okay, great, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to case number five, eleven fifty-seven Bryden Road. Is there anybody here for eleven fifty-seven Bryden Road? We will then pass on that, go to case number six then. Temporarily, case number six, sixteen ninety-eight Bryden Road. Is there anybody here for sixteen ninety-eight Bryden Road, we'll hold on that one. Uh, case number seven was withdrawn.
Correct.
This time, okay, any background on that you want to stipulate for record?
Uh, the applicant asked to withdraw at this time, uh, and if they decided to pursue it further, they said they would let us know, uh, in fact, in the future.
Okay, then moving on to conceptual applications, ten thirty-six New Street, if you could raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record?
Stephanie Reisner, SBS Home Improvements, and this.
You are what?
Stephanie Reisner, with SBS Home Improvements, and this.
Okay, thank you. And owner, contractor only?
Oh, yeah, I'm representing the, the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's awesome.
Jaclyn.
Okay, this application is proposing exterior alterations, including replacing not storing windows, doors, siding, as well as removing one window and altering the size of a different window, replacing slate and asphalt shingle roofing, uh, with new asphalt shingle roofing, rebuilding gutter sections, and replacing existing porches with larger portion, larger porches. Um, so at the May second business meeting, the commission requested some additional information about the condition of the slate roofing, and roofing conditions to be better able to understand if full scale replacement of the slate is required. Uh, the commission noted that there is obviously fire damage in the section of the building that the applicant has noted, but adding a new vinyl socket back in would not be appropriate. Understand that some of the fire damage socket will need replacement just by necessity, uh, but adding vinyl sockets back may not be the right solution. The commission asked what the material is needing the vinyl siding, and asked that the applicant include information, additional information to verify what, if any, siding is being, and the condition. The commission also asked if the applicant is proposing any site work or landscaping, or something along those lines. Uh, the commission asked if the applicant could include information on any handrails or any other exterior materials being proposed. Listen, this is a conceptual application, the staff recommendation is that the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for a year in the future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. Their role's basis for the staff recommendation is the city code, number one, six, by eleven, standards for alteration, as well as the guidelines regarding porches and stoops for siding, roofing materials and windows, as well as the amendments to the guidelines regarding window replacement, artificial siding, and the required specifications for, for wall artificial siding. I will turn back over to the commission.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything in the applicant like yet before we start? I think this is the first time I noticed on page number seven, you can see the original sheathing at the forty-five degree angle. So there really isn't much here of an original skin under this siding, it looks like layers of amalgamations. If this were a new build, we could probably be considering test case products of cement board products, or cement siding, or hardy siding, with appropriate trims and things like that. What is the applicant hoping to do, simply replace any type vinyl siding, is that what you?
Yes, vinyl, vinyl siding.
Being kind of the critical front elevation, I think what we're saying is sort of like it's no longer appropriate to put vinyl siding back here. This might be an opportunity to see the right thing done, so, you know, for at least the fire damage sections of the house, that front facade, maybe it's time to consider a cement siding.
Well, yeah.
Or a hardy siding, um, it looks like even the upstairs window, that, that left window has been downsized, so it might be time to actually put a right-sized window again up there, um, and I assume you may have other windows you want to replace on the house, but, you know, maybe time to consider going back to the appropriate window sizes. So you can see that there's a filler strip, you know, the, the filler right here, there's actually a filler strip right there.
Okay.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think you could come forward with a, just a nice proposal, look what this thing looks like with appropriate trims, foreign trims, and we'd probably be favorable to seeing siding, just with something that looks tactically appropriate or historic at this point. Tell me more, though, about why you would prefer to replace the slate roof, just still, because it looks in really good condition.
Um, so we got a contractor, his contractor sent me, uh, here, about twenty pictures of the roof, and it, it does really look, uh, bad, in bad shape. So our client feels like he would like to push in those instead, if he can.
And Jaclyn, from your, your study of this, have the gutters been jumped, box gutter jumped potentially, you would go through?
Hmm, it does look like it might be.
When gutters have been jumped, has it been policy to go back to a box gutter, or is the jumped gutter scenario allowed to stay?
Uh, normally we find jumped gutters, it's either quite recent, or it's been quite a long time. Uh, for this, it's been a long time, if there's no other work done to the gutters, then, you know, it's been there for a while, keep as it is, but if there's gonna be gutter work, and there are gutters that needed that, that are still there, then we'd say then, in that case, then restore the existing gutters.
Okay.
By, by work, is that include, if, if, if it's rerun? If, if they replace the, the uh, the uh, slate with, with shingles, with that, then uh.
If you're revealing the gutters through the roof or, I would say our recommendation would be to retain and restore those existing gutters.
Yeah.
Would we need something, uh, in writing that the roof has never, have?
Yeah, that's, that, that's the other big issue.
Pretty good right there.
Yeah, to us, it looks pretty good shape, so we're not understanding why.
Yeah, I, I think we need to see those pictures and what on, when we've seen advocate, you know, applicants come in advocating a roof replacement, we've received twenty or thirty pictures, it really shows us all the problems, you know, somebody crawled around and gave us a bunch of, you know, things that really truly showed the slate is at the end of its useful life. Just because these are so character-defining, that once you lose that kind of character, you, you're losing yet another layer of history on the building itself.
Understood.
That'll be part of that slate documentation.
Yeah.
Um, there will also, it'll be the detailed photos, and then as well as the slate assessment, um, a slate contractor's, not the same contractor, would be, would he?
Oh, all right, okay.
It, it looks like some of the metal bridging is maybe bad, but uh, with the roof itself, it's, it's pretty good.
I think we would probably expect an appropriate roof to go back, propose with ridge roll, uh, that, we always did that. Same with, you know, as you put together the details of your. That will be that same way, you know, as you put together the details of your package here, it's. You know, deciding what you want to do with the outside skin, windows could be off a preapproval list, but you need to, you know, figure out what size of windows need to go back.
Look at the neighboring houses.
Yeah, definitely, but I have a question. So if we look at the front elevation and then if there was a fire in there, which it looks like it was. The fire had to go all the way up, so the roofing structure is probably damaged.
We got tell from the picture.
Yeah.
We would need some documentation.
Yeah, most likely.
Then we can agree with you, right? We can't right now agree with you.
The rafters might be affected, but the exterior cladding on itself.
And I see that box gutters being affected. If those. It is, if, if the fire really happened in that area, those gutter boxes are definitely affected.
So maybe this might be a time to rebuild the box gutter rather than jumping the gutter like they've done.
Right, yeah, and then I don't mind my client will, I don't think my client will mind repairing those, will be very. He won't be happy with the cost, but if that's something he has to do, he has to do it. Yeah, because it will affect the character of the house. So, yeah, we can definitely draw that, you know. So it can be all repaired as how it was and, and if the slate roof is still in good condition. I keep it, maybe, and that's what we will suggest that to him.
And if you want to piece me all this out, you know, you could send in your roof report with your proposal of what you'd like to do and replace it. You know, for the next meeting consideration. Sometimes roofs, we pretty quickly, when we agree with the condition of the roof, okay, now we've seen a roof assessment done by a third party.
Yeah.
That says, you know, it's, it's reached the end of its useful life, we've agreed to just move that to staff approval. You know, when, windows can be the same thing, you know, that the siding may be the same thing. I mean, I think you've got a lot here, as long as we understand. The corners, the trims, the components of what you're proposing, I don't think any of this are, the only thing we're not advocating for is probably putting vinyl back on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there are, go ahead, Jacqueline.
I was just saying for clarification for staff, was, is the proposal to replace all of the siding on the whole building or is it just the damaged section?
No, all the siding.
Okay, sure. If it's just like one elevation, we can approve, you know, bring back the same. But if it's more elevations, then that's when the appropriate side would go back.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think he wanted to put all new siding, so. But could, could we propose to put just cement board? In the front elevation instead of doing that everywhere, just so he has options with his budget?
If, if he is going to propose replacing all of the siding, answer that is no. If you're talking about only replacing. The front siding and you're leaving the current vinyl intact on the other sides, you can leave those existing conditions in place.
Okay, okay.
Regarding the, the changes on the porches. Looking at this, it would look like. The. It would look appropriate. However. If you could find an older picture with the bigger porches on, that would be very much convincing.
It's.
It's obvious that these little metal covers on these porches were not original, but. It'd be nice to know what was original and oftentimes you can, you can find some older. Photographs of the building that get a lot of clues or a building similar to it. That says, this isn't the reason why we're proposing. Not against the idea, but we need some reason to be in favor.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
I don't think you're far off though from, from, you know, you haven't proposed something crazy, but.
No, no, I think it's, I think it's right, but it'd be a lot easier for us to, to say, just, just to keep in, in precedent of what we've done before. That if there's a picture, it's just like, if there's not a picture, then we have to think in terms of. Is this appropriate or is it not appropriate? And so if you invite a picture, that would help a lot. It can also give you an idea of the size of the original windows.
Yeah.
I know, well, staff can supply sandboards as well to help get an idea of what's purchased.
Do you guys have access to it from the photo library? Do you guys have access to it?
We do have access. I have searched for photos of this property, but I haven't found any currently.
And if there aren't any, then we just have to.
Or can we find, in the neighborhood, there's likely to be other places that are built similar or the same. So if you can find something that's relevant in the neighborhood or close by, that would be helpful as well.
Okay, and can I leave the sizes of the windows as they are right now, like? And the opening, for example?
Yeah, if you go to the drawings, maybe I think, because they're somewhat inconsistent, right, top floor and the bottom floor and. And you can see how the top floors were all downsized.
Right.
Based on where the fire damage shows us, they were downsized.
Right.
I, I think it looks a little odd to me to have different sized windows, so I would personally prefer that they were the same width and. At least. Are, are they or have they gutted out the inside yet?
Yes.
Okay, so when you go into the inside, you're probably gonna see where you downsized openings pretty darn clearly.
So we just go back to what it was.
Yeah, if you, if you go inside, you're probably, you're gonna see where they blocked up the sills and probably most of the sills came up on these and down. If you want to measure your original openings and go back to, and it's probably, you know, it's gonna be like those low.
The lower ones are better.
Understood.
So all windows would look that size.
So the goal is to keep it consistent in how it was.
We would advocate that you go back to the original size opening.
Okay.
Strong.
Okay, that makes sense.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
You'll definitely have, you'll definitely have a lot of friends here advocating for that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it makes sense. Now I understand.
I think that would be sent to you.
Yeah. And then another clarification on drawings, you don't show a railing around porches.
Right.
Now just clarify that as well, if you're proposing that or not proposing it. And if you go to the side elevations. You can see where your steps on the proposed are right up, right up against the house. I'm assuming those would be pushed out to the edge of the porch, so you have a flat plane. So I would just clarify those types of things on your drawings. Additionally, make sure that you have light fixtures picked out, you know, and bring those cut sheets forward, make sure you have doors, front doors, we have sat through. Some discussions on doors, you pick out those doors that you want for your replacement doors, bring those forwards for your approvals. Paint colors, downspouts are not shown on the drawing, be handy to see where the downspouts are or, you know, what downspout material you're picking. Handrails is another great catch. If there's any foundation plating that you want to add, just, there's a, you can kind of take us from a real simple package to really detail. Probably both were approvals pretty quickly, but.
All right, okay, then that makes sense.
Curious if the damage that's already occurred has been remedied in any way to, to prevent further damage from the elements? Is that something that's ongoing right now, is the?
No, no, they stop everything. Yeah, we, we really want to submit the building permit and then kind of get a store permit.
Right, but, but the buildings have suffering any further damage right now? They're just gonna say to, like said earlier, if, if there is anything that needs to be addressed quickly. We can always look at those specific elements and approve things to get the building in a safe condition so that there's not further damage. But it sounds like that's not a worry right now.
No, no, that's not the case. But I, I, I do everything I can to get that ongoing, I mean, to get that to that building permit because, yes.
Well, since this is conceptual only, there's no further action on our part. We look forward to having you come back and see if you have next steps.
Right, with all those details that you will forward to me, I do my best to.
Feel free to reach out to the staff if you have any questions. They're incredibly helpful.
Okay, okay.
Great. And if they need to do, just reiterating, kind of keeping the one building other tight, you know, they need to advance a roof product to keep water out of the building. Get, you know, they can, you can submit the roof package next, for example, just start some things, chip away at some things.
Right, right. So just for clarification, for the front elevation. We have two options, or keep all the vinyl, then my client will be okay with that. By keeping all the vinyl, that's how it is right now, or just changing the front elevation, just the front elevation to cement, for example.
Well, you, you right now, you're, you're going to have to do something to replace all the vinyl that's been damaged by the fire. And so we're in this scenario where you're also proposing though to modify a bunch of vinyl on the front to make the porch roofs go in place and everything else. So what we're recommending you do is. We're, we're, I'm not likely seeing that you'll have support for putting vinyl back on the front face.
Okay.
Is to consider a whole, I mean, consider replacement with something that has been approved. Which is generally hardy or cement type products with a four inch spacing. Staff can give you all the details of what we have approved.
It may be more exciting, at least in the non-fire damage portions too, we just want to make sure if there's anything there, what condition it is of this.
All right, okay, okay, everything is clear.
Do you mean underneath vinyl?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know, I've got lots of pictures that there's a pencil brick beneath it, so there could be something beneath the pencil brick, which is. Need to have some exploratory look at that.
So we will take all the, the old siding and kind of treat what's?
Yes, you can do that in, you know, like a smaller place though, that if you decide, or you see it's not in great condition, you could, you know, it's. The building is not too exposed, but just in small areas to try to see what's underneath the pencil brick siding.
Take pictures.
Yeah, pictures along the way so we can see what you're discovering. Just like this.
Yeah, just a small area, okay, okay, yes. I will tell that to my client. All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your assistance.
Moving on to case number nine, one thirty two South Third Street. I need to raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening?
I do. Does anybody ever say no?
I need them to acknowledge me. If you could both state your name and association with the property for record as well, here.
Sam Rosenthal, architect with Blue Caldwell.
Jason Gay with Kappa, we're the owner.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
So this is the conceptual application. Proposal includes demolition and addition. So demolition would include demolition of a nineteen twenties brick condition at the rear east elevation. I'm going to be eventually replacing the new addition and to demolish the lower portion of two windows at the masonry beneath the south elevation for the rear door openings. As well as the east portion of an exterior or a parking lot wall, which I, we don't believe is historic. The addition would include instructing an addition at that rear or east as well elevations. And so that addition would replace the existing addition and existing asphalt parking lot. And the new addition would include a bar rooftop terrace and would also provide infrastructure loading service space. Some staff analysis, so the nineteen twenties condition is attached to the lower east elevation of the building. So as the addition is attached to the building rather than a separate structure, removal of that attached addition will affect and be an alteration to the listed property. So the staff recommends that the storage resources commission will need to review and discuss whether the addition was significant. And then there was some significant or more wordy feedback from last conceptual hearing, but the application was fair. So I'll skip over that unless anyone wants anything specifically on the record here again. But in general, since this is a conceptual application, the recommendation is that the commission offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant. And further refine the proposal for review at a future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. The overall staff recommendation is based on the CD code three one six point one four standards for demolition. As well as the CD code three one six point eleven standards for alteration. And the CD code three one six point one three standards for siding improvements, and of course, three one six point one two standards for new construction. And with that, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Okay, wonderful. Welcome back. So since we've been here once before, talk us or walk us through the changes of where we are today versus where we were and what has changed.
Sure, and.
If you need to approach the screen, please feel free to do so at a point.
I, I actually would love to, and I also, in the time since we submitted this, we've developed color images. And have copies for everybody, if I can pass those out. All right, so this addition scaled down from the previous version that everybody's seen, laughing at right here. Like you tell the rest of these stories. We also had a lot of scraping on the front of the building, creating sort of. Patio, so that been removed and everything can really scale back. So while those color images go on, back to the scene, we also heard loud and clear the feedback about the skylight and the way. That the addition is meeting that south elevation, we wanted to minimize that impact. What we've done there is found one of the horizontal mullions of the. Storm window that's in front of the stained glass windows and raw roof over there. The previous iterations that you'd seen were all glass, that was a bit of a budget buster frankly, and what we've done here is. We've gone back to a conventional roof and created individual skylights that align with the windows, carry that rhythm, carry that connection. But also keep that roof a lot lower. Another thing that we've done is we pulled off the front step. That was something we were really excited about, but unfortunately. Was also a stretch on the budget, a lot of extra structure. By pulling that off, we've shrunk the sort of inhabitable area of the rooftop patio. We've put on some additional definition for the space where we were proposing a mural. And really just tried to simplify and consolidate the design. I know there was a comment from the earlier images about how they kind of look like CME block was being proposed. And we've mentioned that it was a cast stone product, have samples of that. Material here, happy to share that, pass it around, and I don't recall if last time you all had seen the proposed painted metal that was gonna be for the siding, but. That's this product right here. Happy to pass that around to folks who would like to see.
And if you actually want to bring us up the aeroscrap box.
Sure.
Oops, and you're, this one here, this is a piece of the San Antonio Preparatory Church that we're using. We noted that you're gonna put that back, right? So. It's the ginger, it was like.
The ginger which now grows.
And, and the sunset.
Yeah, it is a much more finished product, but I understand how the, the images might make it look a little bit less refined. A lighter one. We've also done some homework. I think the first time that we met, there was a question about the Columbus Register and you all have a copy of the actual ordinance now. The ordinance, well, first, the nomination for the Columbus Register was done in nineteen eighty two. And at that time, the addition was already past the fifty year period where it would be eligible to be listed as well. It was not listed at that time, it was not part of the nomination.
The addition, sorry.
The nineteen twenties addition was eligible at that time to be part of the nomination and it was not. It is also not part of the national register nomination, but I'm gonna leave that separate. The ordinance clearly shows the, sort of the meets and bounds of the church being a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and forty six feet. We created an exhibit and it is strictly stopping the back end of the stone portion of the church and does not include the brick addition. So.
That's based on the legal description.
That is actually in the ordinance. Correct.
Do you have that, do you have that overlay of this?
I thought it was included in the package.
We could look at that.
Not, not the one that I handed out, but the one that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because, because if it's not part of the nomination, it's out of our jurisdiction.
And then we're only dealing with attachment, which is a whole different.
Yeah.
But we have another property that's individually listed that actually had an attachment to it that actually also had a legal boundary, similar thing. It changes.
Or the hyphen as well.
What is that?
Is that the one that had where the hyphen instead of like the full attachment?
Well, it's the, it's the school listing, anyway, not having, you know, a piece of it was exempted out of the listing. But if we can see where that, that this legal description has been overlaid with over the building damage, it would be very.
And I thought it was part of the, the package. This is the, uh, National Register listing and it would be, um, not part of that.
But, but we don't have jurisdiction on national.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'm not, I was just saying, okay, it's. No, we created an exhibit.
I think it's at the top.
I thought it was the very first page. On the, on page number two, what you.
Very first page, right?
It says a hundred and forty-two half feet off the other, and it's giving me a legal description as long as we can.
Page one, please. Hundred forty-two feet, six inches.
To go to the next page.
Yeah, it's better to make it right in the back of the church.
Do we have a copy of the ordinance?
Right here.
Yeah, on page two, there's this little paragraph that describes all the bounds. Right. Which coincides with the exhibit that they're showing right now.
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful because if, if we don't have jurisdiction, then you're, you're free to do it and we don't set a precedence for allowing demolition.
So then we're only weighing in on, uh.
We're only weighing in on.
On the attachment of it in.
On the attachment and on the other.
Impact.
Impact on the, on, well, and the attachment on the skylight. And the walkway on the side, and we're also dealing with the most difficult issue, uh. Of the changing the windows to make it into entrances into the church, which i- is that a life safety issue?
In order to provide enough egress, yes. Um, the, the doors that are at the front of the church, um, there's one that is high enough. The others are, uh, my height, basically. They're, they're about six feet, so not even, I'm shorter than that, but they, they don't, you know, a normal egress door would need to be at least six ten. And people are going to hit their heads and that's why the ones that are in the towers don't conform to be able to provide enough egress capacity out of that space. So we could put a hole somewhere else in the building to get people out, but we, we need to add egress capacity for the facilities.
And, and we have allowed in the past, uh, alterations from windows to doors for lifesaving. In fact, I think the last time we did it was up at the, uh, home desk school. Uh, we allowed that, that, that window to become a, a door.
Yes, and, and we did an additional one on the east side at the car dealership building, which is, uh, which is going to, was done for an adaptive reset. I don't know if they've executed on yet. Again, for, for supporting its reuse and continuing life.
Yeah, and, and, and through, through, through the years, we have done a number of them, and I think you guys probably criteria on this by, by. For, for, for life safety and making the argument that the other doors really are not safe to exit.
Okay, just to clarify that, just because we weren't in the last hearing, are the doors we're talking about in front, the two on the side, or which, which? So, so what is, yeah, what is actually happening is, our question was is to, see, see all these windows at the main church down the side?
Okay.
They're being made into doors.
Those are being modified.
Inside.
Inside. But it's a conversion of a window to a door, which we get requests for, but we don't allow for, I guess there's going to be.
So, these doors here are the many ones that are right here.
They're for women and children.
Go to the floor, the first floor plan. So there's in this window and that window, the stained glass window, there's an operable sash. We're just going to pull the pins out and remove that bottom operable sash for window. We're then going to cut the masonry down to the floor level in order to create the rest of that opening. And those two openings will become, um, ingress egress paths, so. Most of the time, if there's some performance, these doors are going to be open, so, um, you know, something acoustic or a chamber music, or if you want to close it, but it could still, uh, uh, opening in the direction of egress. Allowing people to hear in order to come around, go out. This stays as in way. They're in memory, see, somebody would be, go all through, um, back at house area, all these areas that check grade a little bit. In order to find them out, so this is the, the safest, latest pathway. They also provide this day access. There exists a seam ramp right here, which is of like the, I don't know, a one and eight slope. It also sticks out on the right of way. The right way is right about there, so these steps are in the right of way. We're creating this pathway in the front in order to be able to provide accessible access for everybody. Also mentioned, and actually one of us, um, quite how, have a really trying to save this exclusive space. We have in the restrooms, water office, it's all in the restrooms. And in this one, those are seen as an adult changing tables. They're really trying, they're pushing us to push the boundary off, making sure that there are foundations for, for broad coverage.
So the, the two doors in the front that are the short doors, those are staying?
They stay.
Yeah, okay.
And in full transparency, we are replacing those nonhistoric ones. They're not historic, um, we're going to replace them, but those openings stay, the overall size of the, the aperture there stays.
Replacing the floor.
What doors?
This plane moving on.
We'll embellish them, um, appropriately.
Wouldn't that pay as long?
Like, yes, a, a better version of stay.
Yeah, your, your earlier design was actually far more exciting, but I have to say.
Although I have to say, I, I can appreciate that we don't have CMU and the aeroscrap logic actually looks pretty good. I actually had done projects, you know, asked for that. And it will look pretty, I think, pretty good, set next to, like, even if the form is simple, I think it'll actually complement maybe pretty well.
Are there any areas on the proposal where you are either exposing areas of the church that have not been exposed since the demolition, the proposed demolition? Or are there areas where you're covering up parts of the church that would have, are, are currently exposed? I'm, I'm just curious, like, if, if there's a drawing that could help me understand elevation wise. What's either being covered that isn't, or what's being exposed that currently isn't?
So this three D view from the rear, um, it shows that there will be a little bit more of that east end of the church that gets exposed when we take down the existing addition.
Would, would you mind just pointing that out?
Sure, yes. And, um, I think the color diagrams sometimes help to show it, um. So. So, we, we prepared these diagrams, um, just to show that we, we also heard the comments about, um, trying to find use for, um. For the addition.
Yeah.
The, the windows that you're seeing ghosting here are in relation to where they exist now. This area that we're, that was being cut out is the portion where we are creating the loading dock area. That would be removing a great deal of that masonry. The, the purple lines that you're seeing right now, there's this sort of, um, upper clear stored portion of the addition that goes just above the, the roof peak line here on the back. The new addition that we're proposing is floor, so it will be uncovering more of this back portion of the church. Now, with that said, wrap around, there will be a covered portion of that south wall that is currently visible. We're abiding it and just be able to get up next to that wall if you're inside, so, um. There will be an opportunity there as you're hitting the spaces bars or walking along that concourse that we showed on the first floor where the skylights are. Be able to get up close to that masonry and, and have a full experience of being against it. Um, but you won't see the same view right now in the parking.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there used to be a building where the park was now, so generally, most of that side of the building where you're covering over to church. Right now, proposing to connect to, wasn't seen historically. That's correct, right? There was a pretty significant building that was there that went all the way up to the street, so. As you're walking by today, you actually get to see a lot more of the church than you would have historically.
On the, on the front there, where the new addition, uh, touches the, uh, original church. On that corner, is there a reveal there or is there worth it flush?
There's a step back behind the pilaster, um, I, I realized, I'm asking you to look at a lot of things, the stained glass, the purple line here. Where the wall was stayed, it actually hits that, um, portion of the, um, stone.
Yeah.
It's right there in back, creating a little bit of a gap.
Okay, so you are actually revealing that corner in the.
Right.
Part of that, which is, is nice because that allows that for when they still, to read through a little bit, um.
And, and we're pulling back, um, this portion, the roof of the wall back here behind that pilaster as well, as we're trying to make sure that reeds. Um, creating a little bit of room there. We're still doing different iterations of the design for the front entry closet, looking at one where this sort of cloister area, um. Where we stop the closet there, go straight to the grade, so you get that view straight through instead, um, it's just a different iteration that we're. It didn't make it to this package.
So. Probably our, our biggest issue to deal with is the attachment, uh, under the building where the windows are. And you've said you're gonna fit the, the volume on that. And if, you know, in your swine, the windows will. Remain with the part that, except for the part that you're.
Except for the stained glass.
Which I assume you're relocating somewhere in the building, so.
Yeah, we're, we're keeping those four sashes. Hit the bar somewhere.
They'll be decorative, you know, on display, yeah.
Would you consider sort of literally moving them out to the four windows that are on the side, right, you know, they, they get the two sashes? And literally just like rehanging them even in front of the.
That's a great idea.
And just like, I, I, I get it that it's disconnected and it's been moved, and I don't want you to reinstall them literally, but, but just hanging them on the side of that, you know. And they just give a relation like, oh, this thing came off of here and over there, but history can be tracked and traced.
That's a great idea. No one's brought that up, so thanks, yeah, easy to do.
People were talking about putting TVs on the wall on the inside, but I think the stained glass.
I mean, it just keeps some more history in the building.
Yeah.
And in a way that, you know, doesn't become a part of the.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm convinced.
I'm more comfortable with this proposal than I thought.
And, and we don't have to go into that much.
I, I would, I don't, I don't, you know, it's, it's a, it's a question, by the way, of just, um, you know, modern can be modern. All of the windows on the nineteen twenties Sunday School building that you're demolishing, and even some of the original windows that are on the side transsepts of the church are mullioned. I don't know if you would consider mullioning the windows, um, as a tribute to what's now gone that's on the new addition on that second floor.
You're talking about in the back?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'll just, you know, tying some, you know, some language of old to new, I, again, I don't want to.
We can study that.
But it's worth just considering.
We can certainly study that. We, we'd looked at making them pretty narrow affitures and pretty different, but, um. We'll, we'll take a look at different subdivision opportunities. Um, I do also want to mention, I mean, I know the demolition's out, but for a clear conscience. Uh, Habitat, uh, is really excited about taking the doors and the windows and we have great documentation already on the structure. Obviously, there's some photos there, but we laser scanned everything, so we have a three D model of that, um.
Can you, uh, do you have, so basically you did an equal, uh, a half survey, sort of say on this thing, and. Could you essentially like make sure that the city record for preservation office gets like the high res version of all these photos?
Absolutely.
Edition, some of your documentation of the existing, just, it's great to just, you know, even though we didn't consider the demolition of it by. By a technicality of a legal description, it's good for prosperity, it's big to just have it in their files of what was there.
Totally agree.
This is just a general point, so what is the current use of the church? Is it being used at all, or?
No, it's, it's not been active for about twelve years.
Okay, so, so the big picture is that this will be an active use in downtown.
Yeah, yeah, re- reimagined use, uh, new use for, you know, a modern society. Um, we had a proposal years ago when we first purchased it that just didn't get traction with the funding community.
Okay.
And so this is really, you know, we had took, took a break, had other projects to work on, finally came back to it, and this one's getting good traction.
And we're right across some of those comments and.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
For, for me, this is a win because I was kind of hoping we would, we were one day about a proposal for this building, because it's sort of sad dormant, because it's too.
Yes, too long.
And you start to worry what happens to it.
How close are you to having all that funded?
Uh, we, we are about, um. Six and a half million out of fourteen million funded at this point with some high quality asks. We think we will reach the ten million mark sometime in the summer.
Who would you feel comfortable starting?
About then, so we, my goal would be to, uh, be able to send out RFPs in the fall. And do demolition in the late fall, early winter, if, if we get, um.
I would, I would like to tie demolition acceptance or approval to getting a certain funding level because we have. My group, you know, our group just experienced taking stuff down without having funding guaranteed and that would be gigantic, so.
Well, I.
Yeah, e- e- except for we can't make.
I know we can't, I'm trying to figure out some way.
Right, normally, normally, when we have a lot of demolition, it must be accompanied with a plan.
Right, and first the financing, yeah.
Yeah, uh. And because in order to bet exactly that.
I just said, say, we have experienced it, it's horrible, it drives, it drives me crazy, I'm not even glad, I'd like to figure out some way to push that as hard as we can.
I just don't know that we have any purview of, right?
Yeah, but I, I have an applicant here who's a whole hearing, this is a big process. What the architect perhaps has already said this before in other environments, they're really strong with it.
Yeah, we, we, you know, because of the private public partnerships that we enter into for financing, we're very sensitive to that and we wouldn't start a project unless we knew we could finish it. And then at the same time, we do have one, uh, demolition grant application pending, which is, uh, for approval would. Mean that you all need to give approval for the project. And the reason, reason I'm bringing that up is we, we had submitted that application in January and we need to, uh, show that the local authority. Is going to grant permission for us to do the demolition, so I guess I would ask today, would you all consider a conditional approval? At the next meeting if we were to, if we were to apply for that.
If it's outside our jurisdiction, I'm not going to give.
I, I think, so part of this is, we also went to the downtown commission, we submitted to you all first and with the rescheduling of the hearing, it. It got a little funky for us. We discussed the, the demolition there and they agreed that they would support it. If you all simply abstain and say that it's not in your jurisdiction, as we've talked about, then I think that one will govern.
So, so could we pass something to a motion of some sort to say that we understand that?
So at least the staff was how, one, uh, that is for like a letter of support, so it's not motioning for any approvals. Uh, so it would be conjunction with that, um, possibly like a signature from the chair, uh, go, you know, where the porridge, uh, so that was proposed to downtown, that would be a similar thing here.
I think we could acknowledge in writing in the letter that we support the reuse. And we could acknowledge that based as of this day and this time, we have reviewed conceptual plans and support that. Uh, the reuse based on conceptual plans with a forward to the final plans coming. We could say that we have, we don't have jurisdiction on the demolition.
We, we, we reached the conclusion that we don't.
Right, we, we could condition, the one thing is that, um. The one thing I would say is that we couldn't condition any support for demolition solely being on either knowing that a project is advancing. Or there is protection of the historic fabric that we are subject to. Should the thing have to come down before the project, new project gets built, because we need to make sure that this envelope of the historic building stays intact. If you remove the other thing, so there may be. This envelope of the historic building stays intact if you remove the other thing, so there may be some. You know, if you do seek to advance actual work beforehand, the condition would be that you're gonna come back and give temporary enclosure details. To seal up the building for a year or two or whatever.
We could even, I mean, I mean, we could even say something like. We know that the downtown commission's thinking seriously that the impact of demolition without confirmation by us is gonna start something. You know, it's just a supportive comment, not as a bound by law talk. I wanna go as far as with you. If I'm the only one, I'll shut up.
Well, and to be clear, we do not wanna submit an application for demolition separately.
So you could do the whole thing.
Exactly, there, this is not a phased application, this is one project. The demolition happens and the site's protected and then the new construction starts right on top of it.
We could say it's our understanding that they'll be splitting together.
If, if you're okay, then what I would advocate for would be probably, eh, since um, what I would advocate for is. A motion of. A motion of affirmation from this group that Jack and I could issue a letter that I work on agreeing with the language with her prior to the issues. But I want this body to agree to the issuance of the letter.
So would we be seeing that? Or, or you just want?
No, because you can't do a vote by, especially if you're trying to get it before our next meeting.
Are you trying to?
At one, very soon, we're gonna be asked to add the approval of the local authority to our application.
When, when, when does?
We don't know.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do this, did you work with staff to, prior to the deadline, which is two weeks, roughly a week and a half?
Uh, that would be for the July.
Okay, what, to hit our June business meeting.
Last Friday.
Last Friday, all right.
Well, I have the idea that we, we can agree, yeah, if the letter is needed, then the two of you can work on it. So you still have our okay.
Right, and, and.
If you don't need to work on the level, you don't need to work on.
It's, it's not that you couldn't see the letter, but you couldn't comment on it, or, or pass approval or not.
Yeah, I'm not as to approve.
Yeah, but, but two we could work on.
Yeah.
Two's allowed to work on.
Yeah, committee.
Committee, yeah, so I think that's how um, we're doing with downtown commission.
Okay.
But having that letter, having the chair read through it, be okay with it, deciding.
Okay. And what I would ask you to do is, uh, hearing our comments tonight, why doesn't the applicant take the first potential pass at assembling the letter?
Right.
As, as far into staff and then you two work it out, then they can then come to the two of us.
And you know what you need to do on support for your application, so like to use that terminology.
Yeah, great.
So if there is a motion to form a committee. For the two of us, that would be appreciated.
It's inappropriate to be.
Go ahead, no, you're lying.
I just, I, I moved that um, small committee to um, the. At the letter and defining or responding, we're presenting the ideas we just talked about.
Right, and, and name the two companies.
Yeah. The chair.
And the unchair, so the uh.
I'll second. Okay, motion's a second, further discussion. And hearing none, all in favor say aye. Posed, abstention. Cause I'm actually in the, in the motion. Uh, just to note, it says this is the oldest stones of church in capital city, and the nomination, it's pretty amazing. I, I would note that in. One wonders how true that is.
Yes. It's in writing.
There's things on the internet too, hey, we know they're not. I, I think, uh, just kudos, I think it's come a long way, um, I think actually, we're all breathing a little. Our anxiety level like down, kind of confirming this scope of boundary.
That's great.
It's not that we don't give great projects, it's just we have to rule the circle of all, right?
Yes.
Understood, that's pre-prescribed.
I feel a little sad.
So, but all in all, saving the church.
I'm bored, I'm glad I feel sad.
So.
Okay. Well, naming rights are still available too, we're still fundraising, so.
I thought Ambly would be the first.
Would you bring on one? With the cash, just for the.
Yeah.
Thank you all for the feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, and going back to, so we had two cases here where applicants did not come in, so that would be. Eleven fifty-seven Brighton and sixteen ninety-eight Brighton. We have so Brighton case, yeah.
Did you know that they were not coming?
Uh, I had not heard officially from eleven fifty-seven Brighton, I did think that the applicant was going to attend for sixteen ninety-eight Brighton. I know the architect was not able to attend, and so ahead of time, it was supposed to be the applicant. Um, I also wear that they are going to. A uh, a transition for purchasing the properties that could be part of it.
So next time.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, we'll just have a motion to continue both cases. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Do we want to look at anything to see if it could be approved or?
I'm, I think, I think, did they even respond back to you with changes?
One of them, one of the applications do have changes, the other one does not.
Which, which one has?
Uh, sixteen ninety-eight Brighton Road has changes.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, let's momentarily hit those, like, pull it back.
I'm sorry, what are you gonna do?
So let's momentarily look at that, maybe.
If you feel comfortable.
Okay.
I like to hear from the applicant, that's sure. Which number is it?
Uh, that would be number six, how many addresses speaking.
What, what's the issue in the tech department?
So it was tuck pointing, um, removal and reinstallation of windows, and there's also a question of. Centering the um, sills, and the applicant has amended the application to center the sills. They will re-tuck quite, and they've actually um, pointed out to us on the site visit, there are some historic bricks that were kind of covered by present vegetation. Previously, once they removed that vegetation, uh, they found those bricks that I look to be more in size with the sword bricks. So a big part of the issue with the tuck pointing, we believe, is that there's other bricks at some point reinstalled there, so you have varying sizes. Creating wider joint profiles for that mortar, um, and then of course the mortar itself didn't match, but that was that they, they heard that issue. And so their proposal was to reinstall the bricks they found and find a match um, for any additional bricks that they may need to actually match their size. And look at the historic brick.
They're gonna take all that back out?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
What's, is there any staff recommendation on this one?
I believe the staff recommendation on this was to recommend approval as required.
Right, and you physically went there and have been, you know, confident they have said it were asking for it.
I did, yes, um, yes, so our recommendation for this one was to recommend approval, of course, we've got any clarifications if we saw needed.
Okay, we, we could actually just simply move this to staff approval, but.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you feel comfortable uh, with the applicant not being here.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
Based on your testimony.
Okay, uh, what it was, uh, I moved it, I moved it, we moved uh, H R dash twenty-four. Dash oh five dash O's, one seven sixteen ninety-eight Brighton Road to staff approval.
There's a motion?
Second.
Happening second, further discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion passes, so that still leaves one continue. Uh, and then are there any items of new business this evening?
No, no items of new business and no items of old business.
I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
Okay, did, did, did we move that?
So moved.
Second, having motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, we are adjourned at six twenty-one P M.
I am moving.
And I will move.